Alright, good afternoon. Now I'd like to bring the regular meeting of Township Alani Council to order. And the first item is the adoption and receipt of the agenda items. Could I have a motion please? Council Arneson moves it, seconder. Could I have a second? Council Whitmarsh, all those in favor, pose and that carries, thank you. Move on to adoption of the minutes for the regular council meeting, December 7th, and the public hearing, December 7th. Could I have a motion please? Council Whitmarsh and seconder, council long, any errors or missions, none, call the question, all those in favor, opposed, carries, thank you. We've no allegations or presentations. Reports to council E1, is the appointment of election officials to conduct the school trustee by election. Could I have a motion please?
Uh huh.
Council Arneson in a second. Council Whitmarsh, discussion, council Ferguson.
I wasn't sure if this was, okay, I wasn't sure if this was in the actual, uh, requested, we request something from the federal government, from the provincial government for help regarding this election?
We, we did, I think the letter went out, but that's, we have to move through, based on legislation, we're required to move through in this manner until otherwise, but we've heard nothing otherwise.
That's what was my only question, whether we've heard anything or not. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'll call the question, all those in favor, and opposed, carries unanimously, thank you. Move on to E2, this is continuing the modifications of the public input process for development applications. And this is all due to COVID, could I have a motion please? Council Whitmarsh and a seconder, council long, discussion. See none, I'll call the question, oh, council long.
Yeah, I think I mentioned this before, now, this is about the public information sessions, right?
Yes.
I'm not sure, I know that staff were concerned about having something, you know, websites and so forth, and whether or not submissions to a public information meeting would be, you know, able to be tracked, and of course, it can't be supervised by staff, but I really think that there's a miss, a disconnect here, or disconnect, where, where developments don't get vetted, you know, before they come to council, and especially with now our limited ability to even deal with them when they come to public hearing, as it is with written submissions and so forth. Why couldn't we ask the proponents to host a webpage for public information? And then if, and if there's a request for, or if the public are going to give some input, they could email directly to council. But at least the information would be disseminated out there, uh, and with a webpage, you can easily put all of the those, the boards that they would normally have at an open house, in fact, they could even do it better, uh, online.
I think I could just ask Mr. Seffy, I'm, you know, with COVID, I think we, our current policy is difficult to administer, that's why this is here, but, um, if developers are still, or applicants are still going out and seeking some feedback, and I think they are in other forums, it's just that, you know, the way we have it, it has to be a bit unique for the next few months. Mr. Seffy, do you have any comments on that?
Yes, thank you, your worship, uh, you are correct in that some developers are actually proceeding to go ahead and have these public information meetings, uh, in person, in fact, uh, or in most cases, online. Uh, the, the challenge, your worship, is that if we, I guess, the policies or direction of council was to provide for online public information meetings prior to applications proceeding to council, in lieu of what used to have in terms of an in-person public information meeting. There are a couple of, I guess, logistical challenges, one is that staff cannot verify, uh, I guess, who the, that submissions are from, because of the online nature, the virtual nature, you cannot confirm, verify who they're from, we cannot verify, uh, I guess, the authenticity of such submissions, as well as the fact whether they are from Langley Residence or outside the boundary. And if we were to require such a process to be able to verify, I think it may become a little bit more, uh, again, logistically and technologically challenging to do that. Uh, Jack said, your worship, things appear to be going well. As I said, most people are going the extra way, most proponents, taking the extra step to make sure that they have consulted, and it doesn't, I guess, uh, remove anything in terms of our, our procedural requirements, legislative requirements for, for public submissions, any written submissions as part of the process. Having said all of that, we can certainly look into something else if it was a direction of council.
Okay, thank you for that.
Anybody else on council would agree with me, I mean, I think that, that we should be encouraging input, during the COVID, that's the one thing that we're getting the, the least of, is face-to-face input, so I understand that there would be quite a bit of work required and maybe changes to policies and so forth, but, um, you know, this is going to go on for a little longer, and we receive written submissions as it is by email, so I don't see the difference. People are, you know.
So, so my thoughts are, you know, this is, um, to June 30th, we'll have to review it, hopefully, things open up. Maybe, um, as we move along through next year, if this looks like it's going to be continuing, that we would look at something, I think, right now, as Mr. Seffy says, that some are doing it, but to put together this policy might, might take quite a bit of effort, and then we're back to normal, who knows, in, in half a year, a year, so.
If next council disagrees, I would encourage proponents to please do something like that.
Yeah, I, I think staff can certainly pass that on to them, and, uh, council Ferguson?
Yes, I think that, uh, I remember when the public information, uh, meetings, the process was put in the policy several years ago, and it, uh, it worked really well because, um, it, those folks that are having the proponents, have a PIM, Public Information Meeting, it was to their advantage, and I use an example is that the, the, the folks at the Mormon church up in Willoughby, uh, really came forward in full mass about an application there, and that was prior to the time we had public information meeting, and now, I'm under the impression the proponents, if there's anything anywhere near the, uh, the Mormon, uh, church, the Mormon folk, they always ask them, well, what do you think? So it, it is really, uh, a very positive thing, I, I know even the council people ask, did you have a public information meeting, the asking proponent? So, yeah, I think that as others have said on the council, I think that we should encourage, uh, the applicant to at least go out and seek some sort of, of, um, you know, in public input, either through email, or their webpage, or through mailout, um, or even something else, but, uh, it's still an important process, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'll, um, call the question, all those in favor. And opposed?
Opposed.
Council Woodward's opposed, and motion carries, thank you. Uh, move on to, uh, I call it, line commission application.
Mr. Mayor, I'm opposed as well, council Ferguson is opposed as well.
Okay, thank you, so, council Woodward and Ferguson opposed to.
And Richard.
Oh, and council Richter. Okay. Let me do the count, still carries, okay, thank you.
I'm opposed.
Stop it. All right, move on to E3, uh, it's a called line commission application, and the, the recommendation is not to refer.
And I would make that recommendation, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Richter moves it, seconder. Is there a second?
Second Ferguson.
Counsel Ferguson, uh, council Richter, wish to speak to this?
Um, no, I think the report's very self-explanatory, thank you.
Thank, thank you, with that, I'll call the question, all those in favor. Opposed? Uh, council Woodward, you opposed or in favor, kind of caught your hand halfway.
In favor.
Okay, thank you, motion carries unanimously. And move on to E4, and this is a development, um, permit application number 101121. A focus architecture, can I have a motion please? Council long, and second by council Whitmarsh. Any discussion? See none, I'll call the question, all those in favor. Opposed?
Opposed.
Council Woodward opposed, motion carries.
And Richter, and Richter too, please.
And council Richter, thank you, thank you, council Richter and council Woodward, thank you. We want to bylaws for first and second reading, resigning application number 100532, and development permit application number 101013, bylaw 5678. The aptun group, uh, could I have a motion please?
Move Ferguson.
Council Ferguson's move, seconder. Have a second, council long, discussion. See none, I'll call the question, all those in favor. And opposed? Carries unanimously. And move on to resigning application number 120596, and development permit number 101137, here Builders Group, Parallel Townhomes Limited, bylaw 5677. Could I have a motion please?
Move Ferguson.
Council Ferguson moves, council Whitmarsh seconds, discussion, see none, I'll call the question, all those in favor. Opposed?
Opposed.
Council Woodward opposed, carries.
And Richter, and Richter.
And council Richter opposed, thank you. Uh, F3, resigning application number 100594, development permit application 101130, Crown Engineering, bylaw 5676, could I have a motion please?
No move.
Council long, seconder. Council Whitmarsh, discussion, see none, I'll call the question, all those in favor. Opposed? Carries. And move on to F4, uh, these are the non-medical cannabis retail sales development applications, I'm going to list all the bylaws. 5631, 5658, 5663, 5664, 5665, 5666, 5667, 5668, 5669, 5672. Uh, consistent with our past practice, uh, I would like to have them all moved together, and that way they, uh, written submissions, um, can then be provided to council prior to third reading. Uh, so I would ask for a motion for all of those first, second readings bylaws.
I'll move that.
Council Whitmarsh, there a seconder? No second? Council long, thank you.
No, no, I'm not seconding, but, is there, can we do this? Because I can see what's happening, I mean, I'm in agreement with some and not with others, so.
Yeah, so what we did, and, and council can do what they wish, what we, what we did with the other ones, now the first and second readings, is we approved them to get the public input, and then, when it came to third reading, those that we, uh, felt we wanted to move on were referred, so that we could deal with them all together, and those that we felt, uh, at council decided to defeat were defeated, so this would be consistent with what we did, to allow all of the written submissions that have been accumulated in legislative services to be provided to, to council, so certainly, if council wishes to divide, I can go through each one, but this just gives opportunity to get the written submissions and move to the third reading process. So, that, that's all, why it's in the batch, so, does somebody want to second that?
Yeah, I'll second it for discussion.
Counselor Richter. And if somebody wants to, um, divide any of them out, that's fair, just make a motion to, to divide any of them out, so.
I do have a question, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, I'm just wondering why we are proceeding with these now, when we still haven't dispensed with the first group, or have we dispensed with the first group?
There was the motion of council to have these proceed to first and second reading, and that was approved by council, so they're here. So, the, what we're doing with the first group, and there's another one tonight, is that we're waiting for all of them to come together, so for third reading, so those, not all of them, those that council referred, uh, we didn't pass, we haven't passed any, and some were defeated, so same process, I'm suggesting to council that we give these applications the same process by allowing them to go to third reading, and then we'll go through each one. Uh, however, council, as I said, has the.
Okay, but it seems to me that, uh, we're, we're going to end up with way more than eight here.
That's, we had, uh, 20 applications, too, if it's honest, there are 18 applications, so we are going through that process to, to, um, to make those choices, so, can be done here, it can be done later, but to be consistent with our practice, I'm suggesting we, we move these forward, that's all.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Your worship, this is a, a pointed clarification on this topic, the, of the previous seven that came before council, uh, three, uh, were actually referred for further consideration, four were defeated. So at this point, we actually have, um, three that are awaiting council's decision, and four that have been, uh, their processes come to an end. Uh, if, as these advance, just a reminder, I think there's approximately eight here from Alder Grove, two from Willoughby, and one from Willoughby. Um, and then there's going to be a separate application that council may wish to defeat or refer, uh, for Murrayville. So the same process would mean these advance, get public information, uh, and then absent public information on a ratio basis, we would probably see something in the order of three proceeding, if that was council's wish.
Thank you, council Whitmarsh.
Yeah, I think, uh, you know, it's important to just remember that today, when I'm approving anything, uh, what we are doing is moving things to third reading so that, uh, so that we can go to a full public, uh, input process. So while all of us have our, our thoughts about each different application, and, um, I'm sure some of us are very consistent with each other in some applications, but I think this just allows us to follow the regular process, uh, bring into the third reading process, in which point we'll have heard from the public, and then we can make our decisions, which ones to move forward after that, just like we've already done, and I think, I think we're moving in a good pathway, by the time we get to it, we'll probably only have a, uh, you know, six or eight or 10 that we'll be considering on and making decisions on, as opposed to the full 18, so I, I support sticking with the good process and following through, getting good public input.
Thank you, council Kuntz.
Um, so when would that, uh, public, uh, input happen, would it happen over the holidays? Like, when would those notices go out? So that just, I'm just concerned that.
Sure, the timing, yeah.
Tied up with Christmas, um, packages and, and mail, and that they don't get their, um, their notice in time, so.
I'll ask Ms. Bauer.
Um, so looking at the calendar, we, our next meeting, uh, is for January 11th, I believe, uh, which would mean they would be mailed out generally the week bef, two weeks before, so after the 29th of December, they would be going out, and then they would have the advertisement on the 31st and the 7th.
Okay, thank you.
Council long.
Yeah, so, I mean, the way I look at thi, this or any, any development, if you give it first and second reading, in my mind, you're, you're putting the ball on the field, you, you feel that it's, uh, it's, it's worth, uh, considering, and you're confirming it with some public input, to confirm that you as a count, an elected official have put it on the right track and, and, and agreed in principle, and, uh, as I've mentioned on other, uh, occasions, this is the time when you would either put it forward or you wouldn't, so I don't see it, uh, you know, I'm, I'm having a struggle advancing some of these, because I've already made my decision on them, uh, we've, we've been at this for a little while, uh, I'm not saying the public input may or may not sway me, but, um, I, I guess I would prefer to see them go one at a time, although we did, as you say, your worship, agree that we would bring them all forward, but I'm not so sure as I voted for that, I can't remember now, but I, I would sooner not advance, uh, an application to third reading if, if council already feels that it's not appropriate. So I guess division.
Yeah, I'll, I'll go through the list, the speakers, and if, like, uh, suggests any one of these, or can be divided out, if we wish to deal with any of them separately. Mr. Backen?
Uh, thank you, worship, now just a word of caution, because it's the same process as previous. Uh, it may be, if one or more do not wish to be given first and second reading, um, then it probably would be wise to defer the entire amount, so we can circulate all submissions that we received to date on these. Otherwise, council won't be receiving the full package, as, as you may recall, last time we went through the process, there was a desire to hear from the public on all of them, and then the, their direction was to have the written submissions, or the submissions circulated in, in mass, uh, following first and second reading. If we're going to change the process for this batch, which is certainly within council's purview, we likely should defer the entire batch to circulate the communications, then bring them back for first and second reading, uh, individually, so that, uh, the applicants or the parties that have made representations can be heard, and that their submissions were taken into account before any decision was made of council.
Thank you for that clarification, I'll go through the list here, council Woodward.
Yeah, thanks, I just, um, have to disagree that this has been a good process, um, my colleague said that earlier, I, I don't, I think this is actually an example of a, of a very unfair process, but, uh, we are where we are. Um, I did want to just, that you know, Mr. Mayor, I would like to revote on the second one, on 72nd Avenue. If you recall, this is one that we actually carved out and, and voted down previously, but I guess it was brought back with the mass reconsideration. So that one, I would like to pull out, and, uh, and have a second vote on that, that's the one located adjacent to Milner Heights, so that's all I want.
Okay, thank you, so we'll hold off on that, and I'll move on to, uh, council Kuntz.
Yeah, I would, uh, reiterate, um, councillor Woodward's concerned about that one as well.
Thank you, and councillor Richter?
Yeah, um, I, I wasn't at the last meeting, but, um, I have been receiving phone calls from uh, at least one of the applicants who was turned down at the last meeting. And I'm just wondering, are we allowed to bring things back for reconsideration?
Our procedure, uh, our process, or bylaw, applies the same.
Okay, so, so they could all come back for reconsideration, in other words.
If, if council so choose, yeah.
Okay, and the other question that I have is, um, as this is a bylaw, is it appropriate for a member of council to be saying they've already made their mind up? If we haven't sent it to public hearing?
If on, it hasn't already been sent to public hearing, so if on first and second reading, any member of council can vote for or against it, because, but if it goes to public hearing, then council has turned to mind to the fact that this is going to third reading, and that they have to keep it open mind, but at this stage, is certainly within your purview to vote for or against a first and second reading, as we've seen in the past on other ones.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, all right, uh, Mr. Backen?
Your worship, just to, to comment, I've, I've heard some good comments on 5672, which I think is the Willoughby application. As I understand it, there were some submissions made today, I think, um, that I'm not sure council's had a chance to, to look at, so again, uh, there's no suggestion this should be endorsed, but we may want to, um, defer this, this application, or them all, to the next meeting, so that all communication possession on the clerk's office can be circulated, uh, so that that in and of itself doesn't create the need for reconsideration, uh, as we're going it down a bit of a different route than we did last time, which is totally fine, but we must make sure we adhere to the rules of procedural fairness, and make sure that the applicant's communications and the residents' communications are circulated, so council can make an informed decision.
Good, council long?
Yeah, and, and tha, that being said, you know, I'm not going to retract my statement, but I, you know, you've made the suggestion that we put them all forward, that's the way we dealt with the other ones. Whether it's a good or bad process, it's the one we have, so, uh, I won't be moving for division, that's just what we're supposed to do, but I don't think we should be pulling any out then. Because, uh, like Mr. Backen has said, let's get everything circulated and get all the input, uh, kind of wrecks Christmas for some people, maybe, maybe, uh, different opinions there, but, so have you got a second there yet? I, I did, I guess I did.
No, there's, it's been moving second to the motion, but I do have council Woodward waiting, um, who wants to.
So the move is.
Move a division, so.
And I'm all the, all the third reading.
Yeah, so that's been moving second, so council Woodward, uh, did you wish to, uh, make, you mentioned you wanted to do a division motion?
Yeah, I would like to, to have council hopefully make the same decision that we've already made on this one, uh, we made that decision prior to receiving the input, Mr. Backen.
So if you want to make a motion first, before we speak to it, you want to move division of 56, bylaw 5658 to be separated, vote on that separately, is there a second? Is there a seconder?
Um, I'll second it.
Council Kuntz seconded.
All right.
Hey, so council Woodward, you wish to speak, now you can speak to it.
Thank you, uh, yeah, I would, I would like to, to have us, uh, make the same decision that we made last time on this one, I don't find the location adjacent to Milner Heights, uh, to be a very good one, I've heard from a number of residents in the area that, uh, they don't want it there, and, uh, sympathize and agree with them that that's not a great location, so thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. It's on the division. Counselor long?
Yeah, I'm not going to support, I think we need to do it fairly for everybody, so I don't know what special, uh, communication some councils have had, I mean, I've had quite a few communications on various ones, it's not this particular one, although I probably would agree, it's, it's not, it may not be appropriate, but I also feel that way about others, so I think if we're going to do it all, we should do it all, so in all fairness, let's, uh, let's just do it all, so I won't support division this time.
Uh, council Richter?
Yeah, councillor Arneson made a very good point a few meetings back about procedural fairness, and that's why all of these came back. So I think we have to stick to the grounds of procedural fairness, and carry through with the process equally for everybody. And, um, I'm sure, and maybe Mr. Backen can clarify this, all the material that came in originally, and I know there were a series of emails that came to, I believe, all of council with regards to that Milner Heights application, uh, is that going to be considered uh, as part of the third, or the public, uh, input and third reading?
Uh, thank you, worship, Ms. Bauer will explain, uh, where we're at with the receipt of the submissions.
As we did with the last applications, um, we essentially start a new process, which is why the few, a few emails we've received recently, within the last week, we've been holding on to, to send along with the public hearing. Uh, the, we will again be doing the full mailout that goes with, goes with any application for public, public information, so we would start again with all the collection.
Okay, but is there going to be any attempt made to contact the people that uh, sent us the original emails and asked them to resubmit them, because perhaps we should be doing that?
I believe as per council's direction, uh, the advertising was, uh, amended last time to ensure that, uh, a request for those who had submitted prior to resubmit.
Okay, and that will be done, and that will be done this time as well?
Yes, I'll have it that done.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you, uh, council Whitmarsh?
Yeah, I, I share some of the concerns, as I mentioned, that other councils have identified on, on, uh, specific, uh, projects, but or subs, uh, applications, but for me, I think we need to follow the same procedures, I don't think we should have one procedure for some, and different procedure for others. Um, we're not making decisions today, we're just moving it forward, allowing public input, greater public input, we've always wanted to be a council that has lots of public input, so I'm going to encourage us to move that way, and, uh, consider, treat them all the same, and we'll have plenty of opportunity in January to, uh, make the kinds of decisions that we want to make.
Thank you, council Ferguson?
Okay, basically, um, we're looking again, I may through the chair to staff, we're looking at land use only, but we're going through a new process, uh, because we're going, uh, as last week, there was motions for third, and then referrals back to staff, I guess, for the, um, new process again for public hearing, is that, if I made the chair, is that correct?
So last meeting, it was, um, third readings we're dealing with, this is a first and second reading, and it's consistent with the first and second reading that we moved them all to third reading, and then a motion came forward to move, to have staff prepare the first and second readings for the ones that we had taken out, but they're back on as first and second reading, so the process, so far is consistent, but it's, I guess, it's up to council.
Folks, but I heard, I heard the clerk say something about a new process, where we're going back to public hearing.
It's the same process, but the written submissions will be compiled and sent out to council, uh, that have come in on these, and, uh, and, so you'll, that, that's not a new process, we're just following the same process, but council still has the opportunity to, to divide and vote on how they wish.
Okay, but some are going back to public here, okay, that's good, thank you.
Thank you, uh, council Woodward?
Uh, yeah, that's a good clarification, I, thanks for that reminder, Mr. Mayor, on the, the differences. Um, so I'm sympathetic with that, I think, you know, I'm just asking for a repeat of the same decision, so I guess when we originally voted it down, uh, before it was reconsidered and brought back, I guess that was unfair. Uh, some are now saying that that, this is a great fair process, I guess when we did it before, that was unfair, so the people that had the same experience, I guess, also experienced this set unfairness. Um, I've made, you know, I'm open to more persuasion, of course, as I always am, um, but I, I believe that my position is the same as when we, when we voted it down previously, I don't think this is a good location. I think advancing it to January is, is actually just requires the community now to continue to email us and make submissions, I don't, I don't think that's reasonable or fair, I mean, we voted this one down already, so, um, if the intent is to force everybody to mobilize now, to send council Whitmarsh a bunch of emails, so he repeats the same decision as before, I guess that's the process that we have to embark upon, thanks.
Thank you. It's on division, I'm going to call the question, all those in favor of dividing 5658 out? And, okay, and opposed? We have council Whitmarsh, froze, council Arneson, council long, council Richter opposed, uh, so that fails, so back to the main motion. I'll call the question, all those in favor? Opposed? Carries unanimously, thank you. Move on to bylaws for first, second, and third reading, G1 is the 2021 Revenue Anticipation Boring Bylaw, bylaw 5683. Comes back to us annually, uh, can I have a motion please? Council Kuntz and a seconder, council Richter, and any discussion, call the question, all those in favor? Opposed, carries unanimously, thank you. And move to bylaws for, uh, consideration at third reading, this is non-medical, uh, so H1 is non-medical cannabis retail sales development applications by law 5658. And this is the one up in Murrayville. So again, I need a motion to put it on the table, motion please, council long, seconder? Have a second? Council Whitmarsh, and discussion, uh, council Arneson?
Yes, point of information, I'm going to recuse myself, thank you, uh, based on my FERL, uh, board membership, as well as the Murrayville Library proximity, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
All right, council Kuntz.
Yeah, um, yeah, I'm not going to, um, vote for this one, as it is very close. vote for this one, as it is very close to the library, very close to residential, and, uh, uh, same as before, there's been a lot of public feedback, and it just doesn't seem that, um, this is a great location in Murrayville, so I won't be supporting it.
Thank you, uh, Counsel Woodward?
Yeah, thanks, I mean, this one, uh, definitely spent some time on this one, I also don't really like the specific location. Uh, I'm gonna also get on the, start getting on the record here that I don't think the policy that, that we embarked upon here at the very beginning is a very good one. Um, I think I don't accept the premise that we require eight cannabis stores in the township of Lightning. Um, and so I think, and I think we should be locating these in the specifics. Operations, uh, I think this is one to, to leave on the table, I want to express, uh, you know, my sincere, um, heartfelt understanding, the way the proponents in some of these cases pursuing these applications in, in good faith, you know, end up here based upon what I consider to be a flawed process and a flawed policy, so I do feel bad for the proponents on this one. And on some of the others that are being voted down for criteria I don't understand or don't really understand, don't really know what they are. Uh, but here on this one, I think I can identify at least some concerns. And, and overall, I, I don't see why we should be picking one just because it's the only one, we didn't do that in Brookswood. Um, so I feel for the fact that we should, we should not be accepting the premise that, that we're gonna have a store in every community as we generally define the community to communities, I, I don't accept that, I don't think that's reasonable. I don't think a hundred and forty thousand people require eight cannabis stores, thanks.
Thanks, uh, Counsel Whitmarsh?
Uh, yeah, uh, specifically to this, uh, application, I, I certainly don't, don't support the location of this one either, it's very close to residential, it's right beside a library. Uh, it's very close to a public recreation facility, so, um, I, I don't see anything about this location that, uh, would make sense for cannabis or retail, so, so I, I won't support this, uh, this application.
Thank you, uh, Counsel Long?
Yeah, well, I do agree with Counsel Woodward, I don't know if that we need eight either, but I did, uh, my geographic, uh, picture of the township, and I felt that there should be maybe four, and this would be one of them. So it, it seems geographically it's pretty good, uh, I don't understand the, uh, the concern with the libraries. But, uh, that's just my opinion, I, I do not understand that at all, there's a liquor store near a library, there's a pub right around the corner. Um, I think its proximity to the RCMP is, it's gotta be a, a benefit. Um, so I, I, uh, I, I don't feel it's a bad location at all, it's, it's in a retail strip, it's not, it's not, there is no residential above it, of course, there's a residential across the street and down the road, so anyway, I, I think it's, uh, uh, it merits consideration, so I'm gonna support it.
Thank you. Counsel Ferguson? I had to support any. Counsel Ferguson?
Well, yes, I think that, you know, I wanted a clarification, though, there's some folks saying that they, uh, members of council say they don't, aren't in favor of this one. For, in these very good reasons, and I feel the same way, but, Mr. Mayor, procedurally, did we not just vote uh, down one that we had said that wasn't a good location as well, just last, it's a few minutes ago, is that not correct?
No, we passed all first and second readings a few minutes ago.
Oh, okay, so that was for all of them, and then the one, the motion by Counsel, uh, Woodward, that was, uh, defeated, but we went on everybody, so we'll get a chance to deal with them when the time comes.
That's right, yeah.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Richter?
Yeah, I am, uh, in concurrence with a lot of the comments that have already been said, I think there are better locations in Murrayville, if we have to have one in Murrayville, that it doesn't need to be right by the library or by the rec center. Um, the new, uh, commercial going in at the Five Corners might be an excellent location for a shop like this. Anyway, those are my thoughts, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I'll just make a few, few comments, um, I'd just like to, well, maybe for those who are listening and for council. Council is totally unfettered on whether they want to have eight locations, eighteen locations or one location, and and there is, there was a recommendation from staff and based on public input to have eight locations. In town, seven or eight locations in township of Lightning, but I don't think we're, we're not bound by it, uh, we certainly are bound by each individual, uh, believes where they, the land use, where they feel is a good land use for each one, and just because they happen to be the only one from one area, doesn't necessarily give them a green light, and I think there's been some confusion around that. I certainly, uh, uh, like to say, this is not a great process, but it's a process that we have, uh, under legislation, we did have a workshop to try and as a council, come through and come with some, and, and it ended up they all came forward anyway, so the process that we're left with is what's legislated, first and second reading, public input, third reading, fourth reading, et cetera. And so I wish we'd had a better process, but this is what we have, and but council is not fettered, uh, based on uh, the guidelines that were set out, and, uh, certainly, uh, wouldn't, I wouldn't want that to happen, we are uh, individuals on council, but the council as a body will, will move certain ones forward, and some unfortunately will not go forward. Just some of my comments, I won't be supporting this either for some of the comments that have already been raised, uh, Counsel Woodward?
Uh, yeah, no, I appreciate those comments, Mr. Mayor, I think that, uh, the source of my frustration, of course, is that, uh, you know, people see these policies adopted by council, staff see them adopted by council, they move forward in good faith, and then they don't get support, so. Um, I just feel sorry for some of these proponents, the process that was adopted by council is one that, that was distributed and relied upon. And then, of course, we change our minds, uh, uh, there's certain impacts to people that have invested money, maybe paid rent on some of these locations to hold them for these approval processes, and I just find it unfair, that's all.
That's fair enough, yeah, it is a land use decision that we have to, you know, we have to make a decision on, but thank you. Call the question, uh, this is on H one, all those in favor? Opposed? Counsel Whitmarsh, Marfroze, Counsel Kuntz, Counsel Woodward, Counsel Richter, Counsel Ferguson's defeated. You move on to H two, and this is the Langham Memorial Hospital Foundation application, rezoning application one zero zero two oh four. The permit.
Counsel Arneson.
Oh, yeah, we have to get Counsel Arneson back in, sorry. Jumping ahead. Yeah, and on Zoom, it's not like we have people in front of you, it's always after remember. All right, I'll start over again, H two is official community plan amendment and rezoning application number one zero zero two zero four and development permit application number one zero one one four four, Langham Memorial Hospital Foundation, bylaw five-six-six-zero, five-six-six-one, and bylaw five-six-six-two. Uh, motion please.
Move.
Counsel Long, second by Counsel Woodward, and Counsel Richter?
Yeah, um, I, I support the rezoning, but I really don't like the looks of the building. So when we get to the, um, development permit stage, um, can we send that out to public for further consultation? Because it seems to me there's been a lot of comment, come in.
Uh, there the public, uh, do have a public, uh, input ability under our, our policy and procedures is, uh, and to provide written submissions is due with all development permits, so I'm gonna ask Ms. Bauer, have we received any? So this is that third reading, uh, we've had public input on the development permit, uh, did we receive any notifications?
This application actually was the subject of the public hearing last, last week. Um, generally with the public hearing, the development permit and the reas- and the O C P amendment and the rezoning are all traveling together as one unit. We will endeavor to do whatever council directs us to do, but at this point, we've considered the, the public part of the development permit handled during the public hearing.
Okay, well, if that's the case, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to separate out the development permit, please.
Sure, okay.
So do I need to make a motion?
Make a motion, yeah, make a motion to divide.
To divide, okay, I'll make a motion to divide.
Is there a secondar? Counsel Arneson, so a show of hands, those in favor of division? Opposed? Marfroze, Counsel Whitmarsh, Counsel Ferguson, Counsel Long, opposed, Counsel Kuntz, uh, Kuntz opposed. So that's defeated, so we'll take them all as one. And discussion, Counsel Long?
Uh, yeah, I quite liked it, and I know it's a little different looking, but, uh, I didn't, I didn't mind it, you know, I mean, people build things for uh, the hope that people will occupy them, so they don't really build something purposely so that you don't like it, uh, it, it features own. Um, but I was impressed by many aspects of the, uh, of the proposal, I was willing to, to deal with it last week, we decided to wait a week, which is fine. Or however long it's been, but I, I support it, and it's, and in fact, I think it's, it's a very forward-thinking project, and I, and I wish it the greatest success. And I hope that they can, uh, have rents that are affordable, that's been a part of our concern, so, so let's not add to the cost of, of construction by pushing things back to them, they've, they've done their research. And, uh, I, I think it's something that we can be proud of and, uh, move forward, happy to support it.
Thank you, uh, Counsel Arneson?
Uh, yes, thank you, Worship, um, I, I did support the division, although that wasn't successful. Uh, my comments really have to do with the degree to which, um, the guidelines for Murrayville talk about, generally speaking, a different, uh, style of housing that fits the local aesthetic. So what I gleaned was a number of individuals who currently live there don't feel that it actually fits in with their neighborhood, and I'm wondering through your worship to staff, then what options do we have? If we have to look at this as a block, does that mean that although I support other aspects of this proposal and want to approve it, that it's gonna have to go forward like this, or are there any other options through your worship to staff?
Um, um, maybe Mr. Seffy can help, but, uh, generally, if, if, uh, a member of council has an amendment, uh, that they wish to do based on the public input, um, that's the time to do it. Um, at this point, it's gone through the public process, it's now here in front of us, but maybe Mr. Seffy can comment on what sort of direction staff would need.
Uh, thank you, your worship. Um, staff appreciates the fact that, uh, I guess individual members of council would have their own perspectives on on the form and character aspects of a building. In fact, on any matter. Uh, and as such, we rely on the majority of council to give us a direction. Now, if there was a direction, certainly we would take that back and, and work with the proponents to address whatever council as a whole may deem to be not quite right. Uh, as far as the form and character of the building is concerned, I don't believe that I have seen any, any submissions, there have been submissions certainly. Uh, but one of them was dealt with by the proponents during the, the public hearing and had to do with, uh, I guess, the, the height, uh, as opposed to the, yeah, I guess, the form and character of the look of the building. And, uh, in, in all aspects, staff feels quite comfortable supporting the application, given the, uh, I guess, the, the location is certainly consistent with and complementary to the, uh, surrounding uses in terms of height, in terms of, uh, of, of density, and in terms of look. Uh, it is something that staff is, is supportive of. That said, again, your worship, if council wishes staff to discuss with the applicant and their, their architect, any aspect of the, the design of the building, it is something that, that we can, we can do.
Thank you. Uh, Counsel Woodward?
Yeah, thanks, um. Yeah, I think it's a bit, it's a bit sad not to support division, so those that support the rezoning and support the affordable housing can support that, and then I think if we have five to refuse, they certainly have five to approve the D P, so, uh, I obviously support the, the project, uh, as it is, I, I heard the resident, uh, a couple of residents that are emailed in. They're doing pretty well on this one, in my opinion, even with some of the concern around the extra concentrated height on the furthest corner away from the residential development, a lot of those mature trees are getting preserved. Uh, I think it's a, it's a great model for others to follow, even if they don't like the look. I think those that, uh, didn't like the look, though, I think just as a basic courtesy, should have had the opportunity to vote against that, thank you.
Uh, Counsel Ferguson?
Uh, yes, I went through the rigorous process of public hearing, I think it's, uh, an excellent development, I, I'm never ever sure what beforeability means, but I hope that they can keep the rents as uh, as low as possible, uh, as compared to, um, what they call standard rentals. Um, that part, and also under, you know, the COVID challenges, folks have less, less money, some folks have less and less money. Um, this is a time that, uh, councillors, uh, may wish to, uh, add amendments or add, um, uh, other changes that they want, and I always prefer folks do it, or councillors do it at the, uh, third reading. Uh, rather than at the, uh, development permit or, uh, other areas where finals. So this would be a time, other than that, I think it's, uh, great, and I'm going to be supportive.
Counsel Whitmarsh?
Yeah, I think this is a, a great project, I think it fits the, uh, uh, community, it's something that we've wanted, this type of thing in the area, so I'm really pleased with it, um. You know, we, we did identify it to the developers, some of the concerns that we had about the look of it, we didn't hear a lot of it up at the public hearing about look, there were a few people that mentioned it. But, uh, generally, I think, um, you know, the developer responded by, uh, by saying that it, you know, certainly looked a bit different than some of the renderings might have looked, and, uh, that there'll be some it'll, it's a new kind of project, and I know some of council, uh, suggested that it's good to have some new-looking things and not build the same things over and over again, so. So I'm, I, I like it, I think we should move forward, and I'm excited about it, and I'm glad that we, uh, I'm hoping that we support as a council.
You, uh, Counsel Richter?
Uh, yes, I'd like to move the, an amendment that the D P be referred back to staff to work with the proponent on changing the form and character of the building.
Is there a secondar? Counsel Arneson seconds?
And I'd like to speak to that because you know, it's all very fine and dandy to be building a building that mirrors an institution across the street. But this building is a residential building, and it doesn't need to look like an institutional building, and I think that that institutional um, I use the word stalag, Russia, appearance needs to be softened so that it fits in better with the neighborhood, um, what it looks like right now is too jarring and too startling for the neighborhood. I agree with the sighting of the building, I agree with the protection of the trees that it allows, I even agree with the height of the building. But what I don't like is the look of the building, and that needs to be fixed, so I hope that council will refer the D P back.
Thank you, uh, Counsel Long?
I just want to reiterate, I didn't get any of those comments, and, and they certainly weren't any at the public hearing that I can recall. Uh, a council must mention that it was brought up, uh, and the proponent explained very well, I think, very, uh, that, that, that design was purposely done that way, and they were quite pleased with it. Uh, so I, I haven't seen a lot of kickback, but you know, when you're looking at the drawings and, uh, uh, trying to, you know, envision what it looks like in the end, they're two different things, and we've had this happen before at council, and with all due respect, uh, you know, like you said earlier, your worship, based upon public input. Uh, perhaps there could be some changes suggested, but I didn't get that public input. I think the building is different looking, I remember, up against the parking lot, that parking lot's gonna be there forever, and the, and the hospital's across the street, so it's middle of a residential area by any means. Um, I think it's very forward-thinking, and I, I remember the, the similar comments, uh, well, I better not go there, but, uh, I remember when McDonald's uh, re- refurbished their buildings, we didn't care for that too much, but now we kind of go, now we kind of like them, so. I'm not gonna support sending it back, hey, and let's not add to the, to the cost of this development either. Every time we send something back, uh, it, it's not, not free that it's gonna get reworked, and if they rework it, how, how do we know it's gonna be reworked with these certain councils, I, I think we should move ahead, I appreciate, some councils have a concern with it, but, uh, I like it.
Thank you, uh, Counsel Arneson?
Uh, thank you, Worship, well, not to be contrary, but I personally did receive, uh, information from the public. And they expressly stated that they did not like the appearance of the exterior of the building. They didn't go into a lot of detail, but it was more to the fact that they did not feel that it blend blended in with the rest of the built environment, so I guess it depends on what, uh, position you take, like other things. Um, are we looking towards a hospital district or precinct that's going to look a particular way when it's built out? But doesn't exist, and this would now fit in with that? Or are you going to look more at the neighborhood that exists, because I think there is an architectural vernacular there that's already uh, preceding this, so I'm not saying in particular that we throw the baby out with the bathwater. But I do think it's important, the building's gonna be there for fifty years, people have made a substantial investment in their property, and the degree to which it may be the case that the building is designed in such a way, I got, uh, the idea that there had been a lot of thought that was put into it, I don't doubt that, and I did go so far as to look on the pages of the actual architect to see what currently the building designs that they represent look like, both institutional and residential, and that is what they look like. So I think it's more than just an aesthetic opinion about whether or not people like certain design features or others. I think it's really important to consider that as we go forward, that there is some potential compromise to fit in better to, uh, the community, rather than having something, as Counsel Richter has referred, has referred to as somewhat jarring, just because it may be an attractive building in a different setting, but it may not be the right setting for that building, thank you.
All right, uh, I'll just put my, on, on the referral, I, I I guess beauty is in the eye of the beholder, I do like the looks of this, and I've been to Russia, and they have some really beautiful buildings, so summer I do like the looks of this and I've been to Russia and they have some really beautiful buildings, the Summer Palace, the Winter Palace. Absolutely fantastic architecture, so I wouldn't want to compare this with any other country. But I'm going to vote against the referral. Thank you. So I'll call a question and refer all those in favor. Opposed. Opposed, so Council Whitmarsh, Mayor Froze, Council Woodward, Council Ferguson, Council Kuntz, Council Long opposed. Back to the main motion, I'll call the question, all those in favor. Opposed.
Opposed.
Council Richter is opposed. Carries. And move on to minutes, there is minutes in Heritage Advisory Committee and Heritage Advisory. First of all, we'll do K one Heritage Advisory Committee minutes. Can I have a motion, please? Sir, Arnesson second, my council long. Discussion, call the question, all those in favor. Opposed and carried. And there's a recommended motion from Heritage Advisory Committee that council endorsed the updated heritage evaluation system for assessing heritage resources in a township consistent with a historic context. Statement of thematic framework endorsed by council in 2017, subject to submission of a staff report and council presentation. Have a motion, please.
I'd like to move it and maybe explain a little bit too.
Yeah, Council Kuntz moves it, Council Long seconds it, Council Long.
Yeah, so you might ask, well, what what is this framework update? And it's a very, quite a complicated exercise that we're going to go through the the committee, spend a lot of time on it. So this recommendation is subject to the staff report coming forward to council and a presentation. So you're not approving it here, but you're just going to consider it. So that means that it's going to come forward to you for for approval after you've seen the submission and the presentation. I think that's correct, yeah.
Thank you. Council Woodward.
Yeah, maybe I just want to get that clarified then, Mr. Mayor. It's not what I, maybe I'm misreading the motion, but that's 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 not what councillor Long just outlined, it's not what I'm reading in the motion. So for example, council endorse and the updated heritage evaluation system. So it's asking for council to endorse this prior to the staff report and council presentation. Do I have that right?
I would, I I would say that when with that line, subject to submission of a staff report and council presentation kind of takes what your concerns are and it's really a subject to a presentation or consideration. So they are endorsing and subject to the presentation. So I don't know if staff maybe missed.
Patient or whatever allowed to see it. Maybe we that would endorse shouldn't be there, maybe we should consider.
Okay, okay, consider, that's that's fine. Just to make it clear, I can certainly do that. And endorse, okay. So take that word endorsed and change it to consider. If you wish to make that amendment and is there a seconder?
I'll second that.
I'll make that amendment, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Okay, it's moved by council Woodward, second by council Richter. And by unanimous consent, the amendment is carried. Further discussion, so as amended, call the question, all those in favor. Opposed, carried. Thank you. All right, so now we go to the mayor and council report, highlight of the afternoon. I have two reports today. The first report is the my real short mayor's report. Then I'm going to move into what I generally do at the end of the year with a year in review report. So I'll start with the the mayor's report and good night, good afternoon to everyone. The kickoff to Christmas in Williams Park. I was fortunate enough to attend the first drive through the park on Friday evening. The lights were amazing and I encourage residents to visit the park and enjoy the Christmas spirit. Event runs week weekend evenings, Friday, December 11th through Sunday, December 13th and Friday, December 18th through Sunday, December 20th from 5:00 to 9:00 PM. Like to thank all the volunteers and township staff who ensured this event took place again this year. And again, they've done a fantastic job and it's drive through and you certainly can make your donation when you come past the picnic building. They have a bucket there to hand out, so it's safe and they're following all the procedures and good to get a little bit of Christmas spirit or holiday spirit during this time. I had a meeting on Friday, December 11th with MLAs, a newly elected MLAs, Megan Dykman, Andrew Mercy, and Langley Memorial Hospital Executive Director, Jason Cook and Heather and Heather Scott from the executive director of the foundation, Langley Memorial Hospital Foundation. And we discussed to bring up the bring the MLAs up to speed on a lot of the issues in a hospital to educate them on where we've come from with the foundation and some of the expansion plans and projects that the hospital has. So it's a very good discussion. And also there's a motion I've put in late because this meeting was on Friday and and I have been working with our MLAs and all others, others at council have to bring to attention the province, the the funding shortfall that the foundation is experiencing by the loss of parking revenue and and we'll discuss that later in my my motion and it's late motion because I I saw the urgency of this on Friday. So I I suggested that township council could add their weight to their request, the hospital foundations request to see what solutions the province could have to assist them. So had a great meeting with them and introduced our MLAs to to the hospital. And again, healthcare is so important in our community and it's it's great to have advocacy from our MLAs going into government. So with that, that's my short meeting and I will now move into the mayor's address. So each year at this time, I like to do a year in review to highlight what the township of Langley has accomplished and celebrated over the past 12 months. To say 2020 has been a year unlike any other is an understatement. The spread of COVID-19 and the challenges posed by this life threatening virus has had enormous impact on our community and around the world. Nevertheless, the year started out with us welcoming the 2020 New Holland Canadian Junior Curling Championships to the George Preston Recreation Centre. But within weeks, COVID-19 had struck. By mid-March, the township of Langley, like everyone else, was making severe changes for the sake of everyone's health and safety. And since then, our new normal has been constantly evolving as we learn and adapt to fight the coronavirus. The pandemic created a year full of unprecedented challenges, but there are many things to acknowledge and to be grateful for too. We may not have hosted our regular annual events and meetings, but the important work of the township continued in 2020 as staff from all divisions committed to providing the vital services and infrastructure we rely on, while keeping the health and safety of all community members the top priority. And also add, keeping health and safety of our staff as a top priority and work very hard to ensure that we stayed safe. On March 19th, an emergency operations centre, which serves both the township and the city of Langley, was opened. It provides a centralized information and response centre and ensures appropriate levels of services are in place to support our community. We're very grateful to the staff members who took on the important tasks operating the ELC on top of their workloads and responsibilities. And to ensure residents had the most up to date, reliable information on everything from our reopening and safety plans to health and community support links. An online resource was created at tol.ca/covid19. In 2020, many things went virtual, from our Canada Day celebrations and the Langley Walk to our live streamed council meetings, which were held continuously to ensure the necessary work of the township was done. Business was conducted online or by phone, Zoom and Teams meeting became the new norm and strict physical distancing and other measures were put in place as we followed provincial health orders to ensure the safety of those working in township facilities. The township changed the way services were delivered so that people and businesses could continue to function. Throughout 2020, staff could be found repairing roads and maintaining infrastructure, protecting people and property, keeping trails and parks open and ensuring that day to day business continued as smoothly as possible. Our community volunteers and pioneers were celebrated, albeit without gatherings. A Fraser River flood watch was undertaken. Work continued on our climate action strategy. And the 75th anniversary of the liberation of the Netherlands was celebrated at the Derek Double Day Arboretum with a sea of orange tulips, all while keeping safety at the forefront. To help reduce residents' financial hardship during the COVID-19 crisis, council passed the township's 2020 budget with only a 2% tax increase and divided the late payment dates for unpaid taxes, while staff came up with safe and safe ways to collect the payments. The township also worked with and for local businesses to help them make critical adjustments to allow them to continue to service and provide employment. In May, council temporarily expanded patio use and food truck operation requirements to allow for more outdoor physically distanced seating. As well, an open for business directory was created to connect residents to township businesses, providing delivery, contactless pickup or physical distance interactions and to encourage people to shop locally. I would like to take this opportunity to thank you, to say thank you to our first responders, our healthcare providers, police and fire personnel, educators, transit operators, the owners and staff of our local businesses and everyone else who ensured the public had the critical care, supplies and support we needed during this crisis. Throughout the community, people stepped up to help one another. Heroes were found in our emergency responders and frontline workers. And our local businesses showed a capacity for change and creativity that ensured no one went without, even in the uncertain initial stages of the pandemic. It was a year of painted rocks along pathways, thank you signs and windows and rounds of applause at 7:00 PM. And good news, a vaccine will be available in 2021. And this morning on the news, I heard today was in Canada was V-Day because vaccines were made available today. However, inoculation for all Canadians may not be complete until later next year, so until that time, we must remain cautious and diligent. Township residents have been doing an exceptional job and we ask you to continue to do so. I would also like to thank members of township council, our dedicated staff and all of our residents for doing their part to get us through this extraordinary year. Looking back on our unforgettable 2020, it's clear that the township of Langley is strong and resilient. By continuing to support each other and working together while staying apart, our community will overcome this. We know celebrations will be different from those in the past, but we can still enjoy time with the people we love virtually and safely. I'd like to wish everyone the best for a great holiday season and a safe and healthy new year. Thank you very much.
Nice.
All right. Yeah, quite a year we've had. Hopefully, 2021 at this time will see the end of this pandemic and say goodbye to it and be a fond, an unfond memory.
It can only get better.
That's right. It's encouraging to see the the vaccines rolling out on today's news. All right, so now we're going to move on to news or items from prior meetings. Councillor Richter, you have a motion for reconsideration?
Yes, I would like to move reconsideration, but I'd like to amend it, if I may. Now, can I amend it on the reconsideration or do we have to have the reconsideration?
Yeah, first we need a motion to reconsider.
Okay, I'll make that motion.
Is there a seconder?
Ferguson second.
Okay, Council Ferguson seconds and there's no discussion or reconsideration, no, no discussion. So I'll just call the question, all those in favor on reconsideration? Opposed? Council Long, Mayor Froze, that's Arnesson, Council Whitmarsh, Council Kuntz, reconsideration is defeated. Okay, so move to other business, Council Woodward.
Yeah, thanks. I hope nobody here is hungry this Christmas for sure. I'd like to move the motion, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
Second it, okay, thank you. This, and thank you for this, this, I know we're going through a long and long process on budget. I would actually ask council if we could have a motion to refer and include this in the 2021 budget process.
It'd be nice to speak to it first, Mr. Mayor, before you.
Oh, sure, I go ahead and speak to it then. Go ahead.
Yeah, no, I mean, it's certainly an option to to send it to budget. I mean, I think there, what I'm trying to do is advance it a little quicker than that by by specifically asking that that we get the draft bylaws in place to to proceed with this and see what those look like. Send it to the budget process, it'll be, it'll be line items, you know, this line across a page and it'll, it'll be a certain amount and it won't have a lot of meat behind it. I think as far as I can tell, this is probably with the most, the largest infrastructure issue in a significant part of the township to a significant number of people. Think this issue's been in purgatory for a couple of years, like members, like many, many residents in Willoughby and regarding to this issue, they're in permanent purgatory in regards to this particular section of 208 Street. There's no hope for development to do this anytime soon. So really, we have to step in and show some leadership and some commitment to provide this infrastructure to 35,000, 40,000 residents that that require and depend upon. And so, no, I would prefer that that we may be determined if we're just going to do it or not. I don't see the point of of sending it to budget purgatory or some other version of of sidetracking it with process rather than just rendering a decision. I don't really want to discuss this much anymore if there's really no chance for council to address the issue. I've spent a fair amount of time on the issue and if there's no chance of it going ahead, I don't want to spend any more time on this. I don't want to discuss it at the budget just to play these games around and around and around on 208 Street. So part of this motion is to advance it to a decision point and and get it out of purgatory and and render that decision rather than, again, just just play these games. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, well, I don't see that as purgatory. Maybe it summers between heaven and hell, but I don't know if it's purgatory during a budget process. It's an important process that is time honored and certainly there, that's the time in my estimation and I appreciate this motion coming forward, but we are in that middle of that process and and these are expensive items and and I have no problem with with deciding to the budget and including with all the other list of projects that we have to consider. So Council Whitmarsh.
Yeah, I guess, you know, I I I see the budget process as actually a very serious part of what we do as as council. I see that the decisions we make around budget are critical and important and any big items that we have that we want to invest in as a community go through a budget process. So I I I think that budget process is a very serious thing. I don't think it's purgatory. I don't think it's a joke. I think it's a serious thing and sending it to the budget process indicates that we actually want to have that conversation. And so I I'm very supportive of moving to the budget process. I think that's the right place for it. It follows our normal process when we consider financial matters. And because of the seriousness of this decision and other things in the budget, it needs to go to a serious place and that's the budget process. So I encourage you to go there.
Thank you. All those who speak as listening, we'll look at that. Council Ferguson.
Yes, thank you. I I wanted to ask if I may through the chair of councillor Woodward. I mean, obviously I'd agree on one, two and three, the 208, the 72nd and 80th obviously has to be looked at. We're all aware of that. We're also aware of work up as we as we went through. There's other challenges as regarding expropriation or or I shouldn't use that word yet or assembling property and also getting hydro and the tellus to move, remove some of their poles and removing some of the, getting some of the ongoing infrastructure done. Those three points are important. Councillor Woodward, is there anything on this thing that you'd want to go to the budget, if I may?
Not sure the mayor's allowed me to ask for that, council first.
Go ahead.
Yeah, no, I mean, I think the second part doesn't have a role in the budget process. So maybe maybe division's an option here. I mean, I'd rather, you know, get a decision, but if I can't get a decision, I guess we'll just keep talking about it. So I mean, it's it's really not, it's not my preference that it go to the budget and I can speak to that when it, when the referral comes.
Thank you. Thank you. Council Long.
Thank you. Yeah, I thought we supported this vision zero concept a long time ago. So I, as you know, I've held the position all along that there isn't an issue in Willoughby. I don't know if there's a bunch of accidents happening that we're not aware of or lives being lost on the streets. But, you know, my experience has told me that the more streets you make, the more pathways for vehicles you have, the more pollution, the more people are using the roads, the more dangerous it is. So I just, I I'd like to stick with vision zero and embrace that concept more and as the roads are required, they'll come along.
Okay, I'll turn it back to councillor Whitmarsh. She wanted to make a referral motion.
I'll make a referral motion to move it to the budget process.
Refer and include in the 2021 budget? Is there a seconder? Is there a seconder, Council Kuntz? Discussion on the referral, Council Woodward?
Yeah, so I mean, that's, it sounds like where this is going because you just can never get a straight up and down decision on this issue. I mean, we have been having the conversation on this for two years. And I'm I'm happy to admit that I'm frustrated by by having the same conversation for two years on probably the biggest issue that that I think we're facing in this particular area of the township. You know, basic road infrastructure, basic sidewalk infrastructure for 35 turning into 40,000 residents. And if we don't start now, I won't have any chance of being done until there's 45,000 residents. I mean, at what point does it just become, you know, a sad commentary on the township of Langley? That if we can't get roads right, then what kind of municipality do we have? So and I I think you don't have to, you don't have to live there to see that it's a significant problem. I I do find it notable that no one on council lives there and maybe that's why we're having a problem getting this particular issue solved. This this just goes on and on and on. And and I think that the motion is specifically crafted to get draft bylaws that probably wouldn't even kick in in terms of costs until the 2022 budget, which can be forecasted and discussed. To send it to the 2021 budget process as a line item really is just, in my opinion, just just my opinion, that's just just a game to never actually vote this down while effectively voting it down. So this game has been going on since the first day I got elected and the game continues. And, you know, I would really just like to see a decision, we're either going to do this or we're not going to do that. And and I I respect those that vote against proceeding with 208 because I think a couple of you here, I'll, you know, I respect that because at least you're making the decision and. I think a couple of you here, I'll, you know, I respect that because at least you're making the decision and you're voting decisively. And standing on an issue versus others that just play this game again and again and again and again. Thanks.
Hey, I just put my comments in. Um, yeah, it's a game. We actually play a game. You could call it a game. Here's Here's a list of transportation priorities. It's a small, I don't know if you can see it, this is silly zoom thing, small print. A page and a half, small print, small lines, fifty five million dollars worth of Priorities that we have in the township of Langley on transportation. And I don't think any one of these is any more important or any less important than any other. And I look through here and I count at least four of them that have to do with This particular area and these particular streets. So I know that there's a process that we have in place. It's not a game. It's a very important process that this council is overseeing. And this is, uh, dollars wherever they come from. Our own buyer residents. And I think this is a good process, the budget process. It's not purgatory. It is The way council deliberates always. And I, I got a page and a half, fifty five million dollars for the projects. This is not light. This is heavy. And I think the probably place is to refer this. Councillor Ferguson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Okay, I have a question to staff if I may. Okay, where are we? It's my own fault. I should have asked earlier. And bending councillor Woodward's ear all the time on this one. Um, where are we at with the, the war cap? I mean, we've made the motions, we've talked about it, we've had special sessions. Where are we at with it if I may?
Mr. Backen.
Uh, Mr. Seffy, could you provide an update, please?
Uh, yes, uh, your worship, we have a policy that allow, that was adopted by council That allows for the collection of Uh, the, the immunity contribution amount by staff at time of application, at time of resoning. I've checked as late as this morning with staff and currently, uh, There is nothing in the, in the account because of the fact that since adoption of the policy, even though the workup amount Has been made a requirement, no applicant has proceeded to, I guess, finalizing their application to be required to contribute towards it. Uh, so that is the extent of, of what we're working over, what we have as far as, I guess, one side of this concern, which is collection of the funds. The other side of the equation, which is expenditure, staff will be looking to council to provide direction And beyond what staff is already working on, which is essentially the areas that, uh, were identified previously. And, and we are actively proceeding with discussions with landowners Along those corridors, again, as identified by council, to determine whether, uh, they can be acquired at no cost Or at some cost, if at no cost, uh, what that cost would be. Uh, and then at some point bring in the, uh, the analysis to council for, for disposition.
Okay, and I think if I may supplemental to that, I know that even today we had, uh, At least one that is connected to the two oh eight street widening application. I'm not sure how many others are. We are really new in infrastructure for Smith. Uh, but I mean, we're taking, looking at temporary measures. I'm not sure where You're, well, how much information you're gonna hopefully have a lot if it does get, uh, referred to budget. Because I'm sure that this will be a topic. Obviously, it's a lot of money, but it's also something that council has actually made a formal motion. Would that be something you would have, uh, available for us during budget deliberations?
I guess, uh, uh, I have to respond, your worship, hearing nothing from Mr. Backen or, or Mr. Ruff. Yes, definitely, we can, we can provide information to council as far as, I guess, either a status update Or, or any other mapping or any other tools for council, including costs, et cetera, et cetera. For council to, to be informed in terms of their decision-making process.
Thank you.
Councillor Arnison?
Uh, yes, thank you, worship. Um, I, I don't think it will assuage, uh, the feelings of Feeling that this has been put off, neglected or otherwise by default, not gonna happen. Um, I personally don't feel that to be true, mostly because of the collective action that I recall Having gone forward, starting with councillor Woodward, putting this, um, new policy together, working with staff, having Meetings, putting together documents, et cetera. So to me, the critical issue at this time is really the timing of it. And I don't think anybody could have foreseen COVID and the fact that we are very much, from my point of view, behind the eight ball In terms of our budget that we talked about today. I really don't know where we stand vis a vis All these other competing interests. And so for me, it really is about the rationality of putting it to our budget process Where in fact, that is where we decide what monies we have available from our scarce resources to put towards this. And, uh, it's, it's regrettable that, you know, it could be construed as some kind of game people are playing. I really Wouldn't want to think that anybody's participating in that kind of activity, but more the fact that we are Governing ourselves as, I don't know, what, what should I say? Due diligence and the public purse, I think is paramount, especially now. So now we have to look at Any kind of proposition that we may have put forward in the past. Now, as we all know, has to be put under the microscope to see if it passed the test. Is this the time to do it? It's not to reject it wholesale, but it's a matter of timing and ability at this point. So I think it's really critical to remember that and that our budget discussions, I don't think that this Putting it forward to that would necessarily slow it up all that much because so much preliminary work has been done already. So those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Councillor Whitmarsh.
Yeah, I think there's been a lot of good work that's been done on this so far. Uh, the idea of war cap introduced by councillor Woodward was a good discussion and as council, uh, Decided to approve that as a funding source. Um, but when we did approve that as a funding source, it, it was also clear by Some members of council that, uh, collecting money in that funding source was going to be important before we moved ahead. And Um, so getting a report, we've had a verbal report today on where that's at. And, um, and it's not collecting a lot of money yet and it may still very much down the road. We anticipate that it will. But I, you know, I, I, I sort of think that anytime, anytime something doesn't go Uh, particular way the, any one member of council would like, doesn't mean that it's now become a game. I think we're all doing a job to try and do the best we can here and make good financial decisions. This is a, you know, in the tens of millions of dollars To make a decision, it needs to be treated very seriously and it needs to be part of the regular process that we do, which is the budget process. That is the process we've always followed. It is not a game. I'm certainly not treating it as a game. I don't think any other member of our councils thinking That this is a big game that we play. This is a serious decision we make and one of the biggest decisions we make is, as a council Is to decide on what, how we deal with the finances. So, yeah, this should go to the budget process and we do have a potential funding source that so far Is a little behind what we thought it might be at this point, but it still needs to go to the budget process. So that is as serious as you can get in treating it. Uh, any other strategy, any other method would be taking it away from being serious. So I support it going to the budget process.
Councillor Long?
Do we have that motion, your worship?
It is, um, it's in front of you. I'm sorry, it's just referral, this referred, the motion that's in front of you has been, the motion we're on now is
Following on Mr. Seffy's comments there, is there a A reluctance or a negative impact that this war, war, uh, cap has, has had upon developers? Is that why? Is it possible that we're actually capping the development of Willoughby with, with war cap? Is there a reluctance?
Maybe you could just provide some clarification. It, it is only at this point that there is no funding in the account. Certainly, it's a requirement, but what I meant was, what I, what I said was That no application has proceeded to final reading since adoption for it to be required to Provide the funding contribution pursuant to war cap. So we fully expect there to be Uh, by the end of this year for sure, or in the next few months, whenever an applicant has been able to address all the other resoning conditions That they are typically required to address, then one of those requirements would be to, to pay or, or contribute toward the work.
So I mean, still too new.
So we certainly have loaded a lot of extra costs on, on developers and I know that some On council feel that that's appropriate, but when you, when you look at it, perhaps it has, in fact, slowed down the, the, the development there. I mean, you don't forget The increased DCCs, massive increase in DCCs and the CACs that have been put on as well as the, uh, As this war cap proposal. So I mean, you know, there is a limit on affordability. There's, there's a market out there and I'm And, you know, and I haven't been terribly supportive of it all along and I'm wondering really if we shouldn't be thinking how this does affect, uh, Proponent who's putting a business plan together and has to prove to the bank that this can be financially achievable and yet we continue to, uh, to add money Uh, to their costs. I don't know how that helps affordable, whatever that may be.
Thank you. Councillor Richter.
Yeah, um, it seems to me that we're going about this a bit backwards. Uh, What I see that this motion is trying to do is to say, okay, this is council priority. Let's just get on with it. And referring it to the budget process before we've decided that it's a priority Is not getting on with it. It's just sending it off to be Buried in the fifty five million other priorities that end up on council tables. I, I just think that what we should do is say, yeah, this is a priority. We have to fix the roads in Willoughby. That, that That was an issue in the last election. It's gonna be an issue in the next election. We need to get on with this. In the meantime, People are developing like crazy up in Willoughby and the rest of the taxpayers in the township are holding the bag for it. So I don't support referring this to the budget process. I support passing this now and if we pass it now Then it's automatically gonna go to the budget process because it's a priority that we passed. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I just want to remind council the motions to refer and include in the budget process. So that helps. Councillor Woodward.
Yeah, that does help, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Um, yeah, no, you know, it's I think I, I've just, I admitted at the beginning to my, to my frustration, it's not only just as a councillor, but, uh, also as a, as a Dedicated council watcher for almost ten years, we've been, been seeing endless staff reports And endless council discussions about two oh eight street and no concrete action to solve it. So that's why I'm reaching the conclusion. It's not based upon not having the votes for this one particular motion. It's both going through Campaign and listening to lots of people commit to solve two oh eight street and then set about preventing the solution to two oh eight street. I take your comments to heart, Mr. Mayor, regarding the fifty million dollars project list. Um, You know, I think that, so you're right. I do feel that some are priorities over others and I think two oh eight street is a priority over most of those other projects. Um, and I think a lot of people in the community would agree with that. Um, if everything was equal priority, we'd fund everything. So we have to make decisions and I believe we should make the decision to complete and finish two oh eight street. Uh, if you don't have roads right and you don't have sidewalks for kids to get to school, um, there's something wrong. And, you know, fifty percent done is zero percent finished. That applies to the road network. It also applies to work. Work cap was put in place to, uh, actually fix the problem. It wasn't put in place to just collect some money and say we did something. Uh, if you don't use the policy to solve the problem, what's the point of having the policy? Um, so, you know, I think the, again, I'll ask people, you know, ask the members of the public and anybody else who's watching to actually read the motion. The motion is to draft the bylaws to council to look at what those are gonna look like. Which will be the costs will be addressing the interest issue, which I've discussed with the, with the C A O That, uh, that I didn't understand why the interest cost can't be included in war cap. So that, that needs to be readdressed. And that doesn't have a place really at the budget process, but, uh, so that is why I do label it purgatory. So I don't mean it as an insult or anything else. Uh, I view it as, again, uh, just, just simply not wanting to solve the problem and just not willing to just say so. Thank you.
Councillor Ferguson.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a reminder, I have a, an item for under other business and other, an item under special clothes, but I also wanted to talk a little Last time on this, uh, uh, item, I believe it's important to our community. I believe, uh, I've heard both sides of the spectrum today are many different sides, some saying it's not important at all, the Willoughby roads or the The processing, even though we do have a two sixteenth overpass that has to be finished and connected to our Uh, major roads network and, uh, roads accordingly. And that involves this, uh, particular motion as well. As well as we have, uh, I use, I actually use this road quite a bit and, uh, I'm sure other council members do as well, but I particularly use it. Uh, because I have a lot of businesses that I am involved with, uh, yeah, in the Willoughby Town Center, my Physical therapist there, my chiropractors here and, and other business people that, uh, we deal with, uh, are there as well. So I've been up there Quite a bit over the last, um, since, I guess, the center was built. So I have seen firsthand, you know, what needs to be done And what needs to be improved. And that's why I keep talking to the staff about telephone poles, about road widening, about finishing construction About new applications, because part of our plan for Willoughby is to have the four lanes. And we do have four lanes and some, and we do have a double bridge there on two awaits. And, and, um, There, we just wanna finish this road off. I know the development has to happen. I know there's other things, but this is a priority. So that, that's where I'm coming from. I don't like that word purgatory. So anybody using it, don't use it again, please. But we, this is a priority for this council that's been mentioned. Thank you.
Okay, on the referral, I'll call the question. All those in favor? And opposed?
Opposed.
Councillor Richter, councillor Ferguson, councillor Woodward, councillor Long, opposed to referral? So we're back to the main motion On the table. Uh, referrals defeated, so on the main motion. Call the question. Those in favor? Opposed? Uh, councillor Kuntz, Mayor Fros, councillor Long, councillor Whitmarsh opposed. Okay, we'll move on to, uh, other business. I've, there's, continuing on with other business. Um, Uh, I did, uh, have a, um, notice motion or emotions, I should say circulated. It's a letter, so it's not substantive. Uh, And because it's late, uh, really has had a meeting with, as I mentioned, my report With the hospitals, uh, senior hospital staff and foundation staff. And I know that, uh, certainly has been worked, been done by our, our M L A's to bring this And others to bring this, uh, to our government. But I thought with a council resolution Behind it, it would just show that the importance we feel it is to our community. So I'm, I'm gonna read it out because it's not on the agenda. Uh, whereas in a bid to help, uh, in the fight against COVID nineteen, the provincial government has suspended pay parking at all B C health authority owned and operated sites as of April the first, twenty twenty. And whereas a substantial amount of parking infrastructure at the Langley Memorial Hospital is owned by the Langley Memorial Hospital Foundation and Whereas revenue from parking is required to maintain the parking infrastructure and provide funds for much needed hospital improvements and equipment. Therefore, it resolved the township council endorsed a letter to the premier of the province of British Columbia, John Horgan, With copies to the township's four M L A's requesting immediate funding relief to offset the loss of pay parking revenue at Langley Memorial Hospital. Which has had a severe financial impact on the Langley Memorial Hospital Foundation. I so move. Yeah, look for a second or, councillor Long seconds, uh, discussion councillor Richter?
Actually, I had my hand up for other business.
Okay, councillor Ferguson, is this on this motion?
No, I, I had something under other business.
Uh, councillor Long on this motion?
No, I, I, I think it's worthwhile writing a letter. Uh, I, I, I would hope that they would come up with a, an equivalent Funding permanently, because I've, I've always had an issue with parking at the, at the hospital anyway, but, no, I think it's, it's a good idea. I mean, that Obviously, they took that revenue right away, uh, and it was, it was important to do so that there's access, I suppose. Uh, and it's hard to keep on. So, uh, if they can do something, replace that revenue, it'd be very good. If you could do it permanently, even better.
Thank you. Councillor Woodward?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, but if you could maybe give me an update on the meeting that you had, uh, was there some idea of the request That was built into the definition of relief?
Definition of?
No, you're not looking for the restoration of, of parking fees during the pandemic. You're looking
Or relief? No, it's, it's open. I mean, it could be that they, uh, province purchases it, they lease it, they give them money. I, I did mention Uh, an example of when, uh, the provincial government removed the tolls and the bridges and the golden years owned by Translink Immediately had a shortfall and the, and they came to an agreement with provincial government to make them whole on the lost revenue. So There is precedent and, and this isn't the only hospital foundation that finds itself in this predicament. There's others in the, in the region. And, uh, so Uh, really, uh, didn't wanna get into too many details, that, that the province decide what relief they can come up with. It could be A variety of things without prescribing what the relief is.
So the, I just wanna confirm though that, you know, we're not really looking, because I also concur with councillor Long, which we should note down in the minutes. That, um, you know, I also, you know, I was really struggling with the idea of, of parking fees when you're there to visit somebody in the hospital for an unknown period. So And I'm hoping it doesn't necessarily just get reinstated that there's and I'm hoping it doesn't necessarily just get reinstated, that there's some kind of larger conversation around some ability to allow people that are there for, you know, don't wanna be there by choice, for example, and not at the So I, I mean, I would, I would like to see that if that conversation, if you're having those conversations with our M L As, I think that's great. If you could, uh, you know, maybe just as a general idea that maybe, you know, along with relief for the, for this particular crisis, that I, and I think that is the right word, the L M H F is under some significant financial pressure. They have debt obligations on this land that uh, that the provincial government is not, is not, basically took their revenue away to pay those debt obligations. So it's a, it's a pretty, pretty bad situation. I'm glad you're, I'm glad you're having those meetings. That's excellent. Um, I would like to see, though, if you can evolve the conversation over time to uh, to hopefully look for a larger solution and and maybe not necessarily just as reinstated parking as it was, but look at some way for people visiting their, their loved ones at the hospital uh, to not have to pay for an unknown period of time when they enter the hospital. Thank you.
Thank you. And yeah, the motion says relief, relief to offset the loss of pay parking. We're not saying reinstated, just somehow they have to come back. Okay, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Carries unanimously. And Council Ferguson, you had an other business?
Yeah, here I go with my pet peeve. I finally got it out before council. Uh, it's uh, uh, I'll read it out. It's gonna be for our next council meeting. Notice a motion, whereas we currently do not have a formal policy for dealing with extra density on development applications outside our community and neighborhood plans that may impose a significant impact on public services and amenities. Whereas the current process does not provide staff with the necessary tools to require applicants with more increased density provide amenity contributions in addition to those required present to existing policies and bylaws such as the community amenity policy contribution, the neighborhood plan, greenway amenities policy, the Willoughby arterial road community amenity contribution policy, and development cost charge. Be it therefore resolved that council requests staff investigate options for providing the necessary target contribution fees, charges, et cetera, for requests for extra density for residential and commercial developments. That'll be the next agenda.
Thank you. Council Richter.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a notice motion for the next meeting. Uh, be it resolved, the council donate twenty thousand dollars from council contingency with ten thousand dollars to the Langley Food Bank and ten thousand dollars to the Sources Food Bank in Langley to provide food for Aldo Grove and Langley families in need due to the ongoing global pandemic. That is a notice motion for the January meeting.
Okay. Is there any other business? All right, um, I'll go to a motion to resolve in special close for that. It's on the agenda and on table. Can I have a motion, please? Council Whitmarsh, second by Council Anderson, Council um, Ferguson, you had something to add?
Yes, I have a um, intergovernmental.
Intergov, okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, and Council Richter?
Personnel.
Personnel. Council uh, Woodward?
Uh, yeah, Mr. Mayor, I I think it's legal, but it could be intergovernmental as well.
Okay, we'll we'll put down legal and then. Okay, okay, and with that, uh, we'll we'll put both down, legal and intergov, we'll figure it out. If that'll call the question, all those in favor? Opposed, carried. The motion to terminate? Council Anderson moves, Council Long seconds, all those in favor, all those carried. Uh, come back at uh, two forty-five, and we'll commence with the close. Thank you.